Okay. All right, ready to go?
Yep.
Okay, it's five o'clock, so all this meeting of the Tennesse County Public Hospital District Number One Board Commissioners. Regular meeting to order, it's April 25th, 24. I have. Mandy, do you need a roll call or you think?
I've got, thank you.
All right. So just one quick change to the agenda, if everyone's available, I'm gonna switch six and seven, so we. Report out of the board self evaluation and then do the education board report, so we can have a break after the report. Self evaluation. So we'll just switch those two. Any other changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda then?
Motion to approve as amended.
Okay, moved by John.
Second.
Second. Erica, all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Consent agenda, we have minutes from February, March and. And April, which was our special board meeting to talk about our self evaluation. Rule of checks, the foundation report, the minutes from the finance committee meeting. Any comments or anything before we make a motion or anything that I want to pull? All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion from Erica, second from Bob. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Now it's time for public comments and announcements. If we, if there's someone who has a public comment or announcement, please begin by stating your name and town where you live. And try to keep it to three to five minutes and please be mindful that the board does not respond to public comments at time. They may, I see we have somebody who'd like to make a public comment or announcements.
My name is Anne Dugney and I live in Ellensburg, Washington. I grew up in Ellensburg and so it's very close to my heart. I am very, very concerned about these 15 minute appointments and I'm trying to find out who drives the bus. On making this policy, is it Medicare, is it the hospital, is it both? And if so, I'd like to see. If it's Medicare, I'd like to see that directive in writing. Because as far as I know Medicare doesn't have a license to practice medicine. And. The reason why I'm really concerned about it is because I see specialists here within KVH. And specialists don't need to see triage, they need to see your patient and. See what's happening with the patient more than just do triage, I mean that's kind of what your primary care physician is for. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment or announcement? All right. Thank you, move on then to our reports and dashboards, we'll start with quality, Mandy also, man.
It's been. Okay, and. Just to remind you, instead of the quality unit being in the consent agenda, this is the second time that I. Put summary of the Quality Improvement Council. In my report and I'm happy to take any questions or I'm sure. Matt and Terry could comment to or respond to any questions about QI.
Another full meeting, but we got through a lot of really good work. And I think you all remember why we need to do it like this as opposed to having the full minutes in here. Are there any questions about the, what we did at the meeting or is it fairly clear from the summary? Oh, sure, yeah, go ahead.
You want questions?
Yeah.
So the summary, the hip surgery, 90 day later infection, is that connected back to the hospital because it's hip surgery?
If it's within 90 days.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, right there, yeah.
Interesting, and then. Secondly, if you have the document, right, the last bullet point.
On the, on page 20?
Correct, page 20, last bullet point, on the middle sentence of the last bullet, there was one fall of a patient dressing after conscious.
Oh.
Or so it should be sedation.
Sedation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything you want to call, I mean you have the. You call our attention to a couple of things, is there anything that you think we should pay particular attention to on the dashboard?
Not on the dashboard, I will just say I'm disappointed that DNV hasn't come yet.
So they give you a window, but you have to guess when it's.
Come within a year of their previous visit.
That's the middle, latter part of May is that.
Yeah, and they. What other people have noticed is they usually come a month prior and I was looking, it was 48 weeks between the previous survey. And the one before, so 48 weeks was this week and so I was, I really thought they were coming.
She was pretty darn short.
I was.
Standing outside the same morning.
And we're, we're all, I really, this year I feel like people are really prepared and anticipating it. So I think we kind of want to get open too, but.
Well, next week, if they do come next week, you will be gone, correct?
On Thursday and Friday.
So it'd be a great.
Exercise.
Test of bench strength.
And I just realized, yeah, Anna Scarlett will all, who's a big part of these surveys will be gone on Wednesday and Thursday. But she's been out. On leave anyway and Nicole has been filling in, so it just, it just shows that it's, you know, a team effort and, you know. None of these systems rely on one person. So, we're excited to get it done.
During, during a Q meeting, I'm on the committee. I verified the fact that on one of the dashboards here, it says Suicide Risk Assessment Intervention Bundle. Consequently, what that is, is there is a certain amount of paperwork that needs to be completed. And we're, we're hoping to get 100% of that paperwork completed. And we're getting pretty close to it and I wanted to make sure people didn't think that the numbers that were below 100. Didn't say that there was somebody that got suicide. Instead of paperwork wasn't done, so it doesn't have anything to do with somebody dying. It just has to do with trying to get 100% of the paperwork done on suicide assessment.
And actually, that's a good comment, Terry, in this case, this particular month, on, on any of these misses. Feedback is given into the individuals involved, the nursing staff, and in this case Bonnie reported that. There was great dialogue, it was actually a difference of opinion, right, so some of the. Reasons why patients are included in this measure is if they came in with a, like a, any sort of mental health complaint. And, you know, someone might come in with a complaint of anxiety and so Bonnie would think that patient needs to be included. Well, you know, maybe it turns out it's a cardiac patient and the nursing staff said, no, that wasn't relevant to what was going on with this patient. It wasn't needed in this case, so. It's, it's really great dialogue that's happening between the staff and I think they're being really thoughtful about when they do these. And the documentation, so I, I think we need to think about changing the goal actually in the future.
Which way would the goal change?
To be lowered actually, because it's, it's not, it's not a hard. It's not super discreet, but these are in, these are out and that would, I think, better reflect. The way the data is reviewed, kind of the chart audits that happen and how that care is given.
Yeah, I mean 100% goal, I mean I goal most of the substance by goal, I mean it would be nice to have 100% that, you know, I mean, it's.
But on this one, it seems virtually impossible, like you said, that there's some subjective stuff.
It is.
Yeah, so.
Really great sustained improvement too.
All right, anything else for Mandy about her report or the dashboard? Next up, we have our CEO Julie Peterson, who has a verbal report.
So my punishment for not getting a written report is that I've got all these notes I need to. But I did keep my enthusiastic leadership team managed to compile 124 page packet, so I think that's an all times eye. I kept the paper. I think last month we mentioned that some of Tricia Sennett's work was actually published in the Journal of American Medicine. We went back to Bob and Matt and I went back to the American Hospital Association's annual meeting. And we worked with the rural specialists at HA to transition that work into a really great story about KVH's commitment to OB and full spectrum women's health. And sort of the creative ways that we approached that, so they had created, I participated in a podcast while I was back there with the HA. And they had created a really, really great flyer that I actually made HA Today, so when you find your HA Today flyer in your email. Scroll down and you will find Tricia's work referenced again from HA, so very proud of that and it was a great story, so. I also had an opportunity this week and I, I'm going to look to find out if it was recorded or if it will be repeated. But I had an opportunity to participate in some suicide prevention education from the Department of Health. That I thought was just really well grounded and it was presented by a veterans organization, did you have a chance to?
No, I believe it's being repeated.
Okay.
I'll have to look for it on my calendar.
It's very user friendly and, and just conversational and I would really. Encourage anybody who can watch it to, to get on and Mandy, can we send that out or find it? I am pleased to announce that we were able to hire a chief of facilities for Quinn Ron. For Quinn Ron finally wanders into the sunset on July 3rd, he's maintaining that date. We had a number of very, very good candidates, but settled on Wayne Tittas. Who is from Texas, has many, many years of experience, he had. Of the candidates, I think we were attracted to him because of his background in the trades, he's a bowling sleeves up kind of guy. But also had a lot of experience working with blueprints, working with engineering, working with architects, a lot of that. That sort of enterprise wide stuff we were looking for, both Ron and John were on the interview committees and the final selection, any comment? Where'd you say he's coming from? Texas, Texas, and he will start May 20.
So my comments are, I enjoyed being part of the group and seeing this firsthand and. You know, Ron set the bar so high, even though these are three very highly qualified candidates, you feel like, you know, if they're gonna stop to ease their way into the job, there's so much to learn and whatnot, but. I'm excited, this gentleman, it sounds like he must have accepted the position also then, so. So yeah, it was a great experience and fun to be a part, Ron, do you have any thoughts?
I, I think he's gonna work out well, I'm excited, I've worked with him for a month and.
Yeah, notice you had to get that in there, so until July 3rd at 5:00 P.M. I would just say, I really want, one of the reasons we were able to select a candidate like that is Ron has developed a really strong engineering team. And I think of, of their ability to manage the hospital, to keep the systems in the hospital going, well, Ron and Wayne kind of. Does do some knowledge transfer about construction projects and our plans in the future, so we will be joining a very strong team. The transition of Hearts and Hands to KCHN and in part also to the KVH Foundation is going very well, so. The case management folks from KCHN have moved into the old Hearts and Hands location. On second and they're doing some cross training to make sure that our, our community's hospice patients. Are served at that lending library and other services that Hearts and Hands have traditionally provided, so. Couple of employees from Hearts and Hands came along and there's a little more, I think, than Ron, that may know this number better. About $57,000 that we're arranging to have transferred to the foundation to support the hospice volunteers that. Anything else on that, Ron, that figure?
No, that's correct, it's about $57,000 that was earmarked for KVH hospice to receive because they were restricted funds.
But I think KCHN is really pleased with the way the transition is going and I'll just say, having them, we were at risk of losing those services. And having KCHN in a position to step in and make sure that we continue to serve the community that way was, was really helpful and I think it just. That it feels like that organization after years of running from grant to grant is really starting to feel sustainable, so. I'm looking forward to more of that. Reproductive privacy, if you'll recall, we and every other public district hospital in state pretty much had received notice from. The Attorney General's Office, which they believe we were out of compliance with the Reproductive Privacy Act, we responded and explained to them. There was some suggestions they made about our policy and how we presented it on our website, we responded to that. Heard back from them in March and responded in April with our, the scripts that we are using, our updated policy. Dr. Martin's survey of medical staff and services that are provided, we have not, since we've provided that packet back to them, we have not heard back from them, so we're waiting again. And I do want to confirm two dates, May 28th, with the board's permission, I would like to invite the foundation. To join the Hospital District One Board for a tour as we close out Phase One. So you'll actually have an opportunity to see the new MRI, the new CT, go back to the real space and what your $33 million is buying. And also mingle with the foundation, they have a board meeting that night, so. After a tour and some conversation, I'd like to invite the architect and maybe then the contractor to be there to answer questions. They would come to this room and do their meeting and then the Hospital District One Board could meet with Ron and the architect. And get a refreshed set of numbers and schedules for the remaining phases of the project, so that as we move into. What I would describe as smaller phases but complicated, lots of moving parts. And also invite people like Amy Crowsdads, who will be up to the additional projects. Highbrows, get them to talk with the board, so that would be the evening of May 28th.
We have a specific time, it's just.
Foundation Board meets at 5:30, I think, so probably 4:30 or, or 5:00. And the second date I wanted to confirm was July 27th. Or that should be a Saturday for about 9:00 to 2:00 to do a strategic plan refresh. I'd like to focus with some education on the vision and the different components that are coming together for our complete community based medicine. So we would invite Dr. Stone, the new leader of community based medicine to join us, KCHN. Who has a significant component of that work as well, just to come and talk about the way we're trying. To pull the, the different services, the different folks in the community who are out in people's homes. For non-traditional healthcare settings to care for patients, talk about that a little bit, get an update on all of our quality planning. And see what the board has in, in terms of tweaks or adjustments to strategic plan and that would be July 27th.
All right, so don't forget to put that, May 28th and July 27th on your calendars.
Yes, that is, that will be down. And that is everything I have, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions for Julie? Thank you, Julie, next we have Amanda Scott's HR report, Amanda, is there anything you want to? Call our attention to?
Yes, it's actually not on my report, but just some developments this week, I am remote. We do have, you probably saw note in my report that we've been partnering with Teamsters quite a bit over the last month about representation, so. We do have a new bargaining unit that is likely going to be formed under our Teamsters representation and that is the pharmacist group. And so we wanted to keep you updated on the developments on that, they did do their interest cards and the way perk. The Public Employee Relations Council works is that they submit enough interest cards that they don't actually have to do a formal vote. And so that, we just got news today from our representative that they are moving forward with that. We also don't have to do a formal negotiation this year, they are hoping to join the respiratory therapist contract and kind of have a joined professional. Technical group in the contract and so we will be meeting to kind of go over that contract. With the pharmacist and what applies, what doesn't apply and what concerns we may have, but it's really not a formal vote and a not a formal. Negotiation, full negotiation this year, they're hoping to just join that professional contract, so that is big news, that did just kind of come up today is. Kind of a final update, but there is a lot more work to do and I'll keep you updated in our board reports and please let me know if you have any questions and. Just one more thing before I end, we did look back on some of our data for 2023 and we actually found. On our, if you look at my metrics on page 26, you'll see the turnover percentage year to date for 2023 has been adjusted, we did find a. Miscalculation on that, which is good news, it's actually lower than we expected, so it's 24.73, I put an asterisk on that as a reminder. Our previous board report had 25.25 and so I'm glad to report it's actually lower than expected and not higher than expected, so I apologize for that. Miscalculation, thank you.
Amanda, I know you touched on this before, but turnover does not include referring. Locums, that sort of thing, they're, they're not part of that, right?
Not agency staff, since they're not employed with us, it does include per diems, but not at the time when people shift to per diem, it includes when they. Leave completely to KVH, so that does get kind of challenging because sometimes people will. Move to a per diem status and try to be available if they leave and it just doesn't really work out, they're either not as available as expected. But then they're still employed with KVH for sometimes a month after they resign, so that per diem part does get a little tricky, but. Otherwise, it does not include anybody who's not formally employed getting a paycheck by KVH.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Amanda at the HR report? Thank you very much, Amanda.
Thank you.
Next we have Ron with an expansion project update, Ron.
Starts on page 28, I guess, I want to call out on the project costs. It actually went down because on the last report. Updated equipment number I grabbed already had tax applied, so that was calculated twice. Little over $400,000, so anyhow, sorry about that mistake. Under equipment, we've got all this CT equipment in and MRI equipment, but the CT equipment. Didn't come with the power supply, so they had to track that down, we expect that next week, so that's. Delayed their install just a little bit, but it does not delay the project, it's. Parallel with that, so we'll still have plenty of time to get it installed and started up. Little change there and. I guess we finished off the, the medical air and family birthing place, so they're now able to use that. That's done and. For some of the shutdowns, we got domestic water shutdown scheduled for next week, this affects outpatient surgery and then the medical gas shutdown that will also affect. Patient surgery next week. And so in terms of where the project's at, we started up the, the new air handler and then we did our vibration testing that they do in the MRI and the CT room. And so they're looking for, we had to run all the equipment on the roof and then they physically look for excessive vibration in those rooms that would. Make the images not readable and so we're waiting for the report on that, but I haven't, I haven't proceeded any back, so I think we're good. And so, and there was no issues with the air hammer, so that's, that's good, so. That'll get started up here in another couple of weeks and then stay running from there on out. So Gideon has got all their central sterile equipment installed, they just pulled out yesterday. Contractors are making all their final connections to that, they'll come back in about three, four weeks and then go ahead and start that equipment up and test it all out. So that went pretty well and we have our. Reverse osmosis system for the, that serves all that CS, CS equipment starts up on the sixth. And the CT will install on the sixth also and then MRI scheduled for the 13th. And the energy project is essentially wrapped up, other than punchless, we've got that dry cooler online and that's working. So yeah, they're doing punchless, the only thing they'll have after that is they will do. Lots of data trending and so they have to go through a verification process that all these energy measures are in fact working. And so that will go on, I think they have to do that for like two years. That works will continue on. But we can get a few contractors out of party lines, that's good news. I think that's about it for construction.
We'll have a chance obviously to talk to Ron about somebody's report later, but any questions specifically about the expansion project? Oh yeah, pictures.
Storefront window out to the north for employee entrance. And that's that RO system in the, that central sterile.
Reverse assessment.
It's, yeah. And that's ducting on the roof that's going across to the existing radiology air handler so that. Those ducts will replace that air handler in there and that's our oldest air handler. So that was signed in, so that on May 8th, we demo that unit out and tie this in. When that all happens and in the background there was a dry cooler. Yeah. The three fans. And that picture I just throw in just to show you why when the guy engineering goes to mount something to the wall, you kind of have to be careful. Those are all mid gas lines.
Wow.
Back in OR equipment storage, that's, they're actually doing the flooring in there today. It's all done by now. And that's in the CT room, excuse me, the MRI room. The bag that's sitting in there now.
I have to say, it's a little bit unnerving when they offload these million dollar CTs and MRIs like they were sofas. And then they sit out in the parking lot. Yeah, what could possibly go wrong, but it's sure exciting and Kenny Greenwood, the director of imaging, was just beside herself when her new MRI showed up.
He was down there directing. That's our CT there. And all those holes got equipment in it now, so that's the central sterile. Main room. And again, that's the, the chiller for the MRI unit and then the dry cooler on the right. Hard wash with that blue glass in the back. Yeah, it's all full and that's inside the, the air handling unit. Even that started up.
Any questions about the expansion project?
Well, on the page 31 in the middle and some bullet points under 410. Got handle broke off, destroyed, valve stem are destroyed, is this abnormal sort of situation, what's, what's causing these failures?
I've seen that one other time. Memorial Hospital handles break off, so these are, you know, roughly 200 amp disconnects. It's a big plastic blade, this big, and when I went to turn it on and just snapped off. So that's not good, but the good news is, is when it serves that radiology air handler, when that goes away in a week here.
So we pointed that to you. Good, thank you.
Other questions about the expansion project? Thank you, Ron.
And that's not uncommon for those. Those valves to be hard opening after twenty years. They just. They're not ones that regularly get moved.
And so these are new ones. We just put in. These are old. These are old.
Thanks for that clarification. Okay, next, uh, we move on to operations. Going to start with Didi Utley, our CNO. E.
My report begins on page thirty-six and I want to um first, I guess, uh, make a correction. Under med surge, uh CCU, I wrote the dialysis is progressing slowly. Um, I have an update. We're moving. Oldman and Wayne Foley, who's our dialysis coordinator, and we have some dates for education. Um, so I do have one per diem nurse who we have uh are in the process of hiring. And Wayne and they will be traveling for education down in California at the end of. May, so it's really nice to see some some solid dates and a plan for the training. Um, and I believe, Ron, we are starting construction. Next week on the CCU uh room. My understanding and that should take.
Monday.
Yeah, Monday should take about ten days is what I'm. And looks like we have a plan, though, for infrastructure.
Yeah.
The changes will. So we are shooting for an early July. Uh, well. I will keep you posted, so. Uh, yes, I said slowly, but I think now these are going to really speed up over these next couple of months. So I'm very excited about that. Um, last month I did notice that we did transfer a few patients out. Uh, due to the dialysis, so. More to come on that. Um, the other thing that has happened since I typed this up just today, we received notification from this department of health that bar trauma designation. And we are, we were awarded a provisional status, which is not uncommon. Um, I believe our last one was also provisional, just. They need a little more information from us, so I'm working with our new trauma coordinator and Cody in the emergency department and we'll. Have a plan, get all that submitted. Um, so. Uh, as you know, we are a level four trauma designated facility. And just lastly, I've been doing a lot of work and I didn't put this in my report on our hospital staffing committee. Um, this is the committee of both management and clinical staff. That um we have had and uh with recent legislation changes. We're having to do some updating with our charter and just our process. Uh, reviewing staffing plans and a few other components. And I believe that Amanda and I will be doing a presentation for you soon. Uh, more on that information will be coming. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
It's exciting. This nursing assistant course.
Oh, yes, that's Monday. That's great. And we have six phenomenal applicants and we even have. We're already in our second class, so.
Did we have thirty-six applicants?
We had, oh, yeah, it was crazy. I think I reported that we had like ten or eleven last month and the next day it like more than doubled.
Wow.
So um and as they uh HR worked with our um clinical educator Amy to really do a good thoughtful vetting. And um and we've even got people that were hoping when the next class comes that they're still interested, we can just help them write in kind of like on a waitlist.
And I think that. When we were back in DC talking about, you know, you can complain about workforce, but the fact that we were able to talk to. That we are training, we have an apprenticeship program for inmates, we have an apprenticeship program for our pharmacy techs. We have this. New program we're starting for CNAs and all the students we're hosting. It's. You know, we're out there doing what we can to fill the gaps in the workforce, and I think that was in fact, well, certainly, yeah.
Great.
Is there anything you can share about the April sixteenth part of drill?
Um, I was not able to attend, but I did uh peek my head in. It, what they did is they actually started up in this room and they had two groups. Um, they did, uh, they took time to do education and then they went downstairs and actually had. A patient set up in the emergency department that they were able to drill. Um, I believe we had physicians um attend, which was great. And um members from the lab. And it's, you know, something that we're going to continue doing. I know we have many slated. So real proud of the education that we're doing.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions for Didi? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next up we have Ron DeHulden, our chief ancillary officer. Ron?
Hi, everyone. Um, my report's on page thirty-eight and thirty-nine. Um, in addition, I would say uh about home-based primary care is that Mary um has met her patients at Hearthstone while she will be taking over for them. So right now she has twenty patients assigned to her there. And she's been working closely with uh Mary Newans, um, because. Mary Kamati is also a wound care nurse uh and colostomy nurse, so they have several patients in common. Uh, it's just been a wonderful collaboration in ten days of work. Any questions for me?
Some staffing issues in the pharmacy, but uh it's. I imagine it can be hard to maintain a twenty-four hour pharmacy.
That's true. We've relied very heavily on some of our per diem staff um to cover vacations, but it's actually turned out that one of our per diem staff is. Uh, had a medical issue and hasn't been able to work, so that's put a kind of a kink in the schedule.
Other questions for Ron? Thank you very much, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our chief of clinic operations, Stacy. Stacy?
Yes, my report starts on page forty. I don't have anything to add since I wrote it and I'd be up for questions.
Dr. Breeden's still helping us out in PDI.
Absolutely. Kind of amazing to have her there. She's having a blast too. She's really enjoying the working.
Uh, the the chart on page forty-two.
Yes.
Um, it's like an eye test. Um, anything you can elaborate. I can't read. I don't know what you tried to tell me with that chart. You can help explain it in the future. I'll know more what to do with that.
Sure. So when we've been working on the phone project with family medicine, one of the things Leanne recommended was doing some level loading. Looking at the work each patient service representative was doing. And this is from internal adult medicine and we had one of the MAs approach us and say, hey. I don't think so-and-so is actually picking up messages in the pool. I feel like I'm doing all the work myself. So all the messages for the MAs go into one pool for the team, so we're not relying on one person to do that. So we thought, let's try looking at level loading for the MAs in that clinic. So Shelley, our MA development coordinator. Will work with Leanne and we ask the MAs to track the number of tasks that they're doing. So the tasks that they do in a day are rooming patients. A depth addressing the task list, doing chart prep, abstracting information from charts, point of care testing. Immunizations, prior offs, prescriptions refilled because the pharmacy doesn't do internal and adult medicine. Placing orders for providers. Insight, which is our pathology lab, processing their specimen results. Um, results entered in for the PHQ nine and get seven surveys. And printing reports for patients and providers. So each. Box is like five tasks and these are color coded.
Each color code is one of those.
Is one of those tasks. So we were looking at. How much work are people doing in a shift? This is one day of the week and how much of the time is spent for each one? So Shelley just completed it the week I was writing my report. Our next step is really to look at it for a weekly basis. And see where the MAs are spending their time and where there's opportunities for efficiencies.
It's good to have that down.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. That helps explain a lot.
I'll put it in, uh, make them much larger ones. You can actually.
I mean, just for me, everyone else I'm sure could see if it was fun.
On the dashboard, um. Third available appointments. Um, for cardio and neuro.
All right, have a good night. They're they're both a one hundred, about a hundred days out, but they're both clinics that have.
Yeah, right.
Um, Dr. Hoppy's done a lot of work with Emily and looking at how to balance new patients versus existing patients. And she's up the number of patients she's seeing too. Sometimes it's up to twelve a day in a full day. So we are trying to get more through there. Dr. Gustafson usually sees about twelve a day also.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Hoppy, did you want to add something to that or?
Uh, no, I think we're just really working on streamlining everything and um. You know, I'm seeing anywhere currently between, you know, ten and actually thirteen patients a day, so we are. Really kind of ramping up here, but that's kind of in part because my staff is uh, you know, becoming very efficient and so we're able. To move quickly through our patient load, so.
And we do have a APC posted for cardio.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
A new patient crowd always just pours me. So many, I barely wrap my mind around that. And that's just new patients. Phone calls that go with all that, that's not even established.
It it was interesting. We had our neurology staff meeting today. I had Dr. Gustafson shared that Yakima's lost a neurologist. Confluence is down to three, so they've lost a bunch. And really, the only places you'd like to go are Spokane or the West Side. So he's anticipating sleeping a lot more patients through and that staff is starting to see more people from outside of Kona Towne County. Get referred to our neurology clinic.
I also wanted to mention um the photos that are in the reports. I think they've been like that. It's very visual, so being able to kind of peek inside the work that's meaningful.
Any other questions for Stacy? Thanks a lot, Stacy. Now we're up to uh support services and we start with Michelle Worrall, our chief public relations officer. Michelle?
Good evening, everybody. Um, other than the fact that I will be on vacation next week, I do not have anything new to add to. The report, so I would be happy to take any questions.
I know that uh. You know, for for all the board members, uh, KBH is also a place where we get our healthcare. And it's gratifying when you see people being recognized who you. See sort of firsthand do really excellent work. I don't think I'm embarrassing anybody or reviewing any. Private but informal information about myself, but Erin Olander, um, I've had some uh interaction with her and she's just amazing. So it's really good to see her get to. Get recognized, so.
You know, the great things about the Diamond Awards is um every month we, I hear the same question that we have on the Save Catch Awards of. Do we really only have to pick one? And I I think that's a great problem to have.
Any questions for Michelle?
Michelle, page forty-seven on your um chart. The engagement at it looks like one minute and eight seconds. Is that, am I reading that correctly on the engagement? You see that?
Um, I do see that. Yeah.
Is it, is that one hour and eight minutes or one minute and eight seconds?
You know, that is exactly. I am going to base that we're looking at the website. Um, my estimation is that is probably actually one minute, but I will confirm that with my digital.
Tiny, tiny letters. It does say minute, minute, second, second.
Oh, there it is. Yep, there's another eye test.
I like it when I presumed the right thing.
And so that's that's a webpage engagement or watching a video engagement?
That is webpage engagement. On the overview, um, I think it's just on the front side, front page. And I can answer that next week, but that would actually be good if that's the case because it means that they're finding what they're looking for and moving on.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh huh.
Any other questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle. Uh, next up we have Jeff Yamada, our chief information officer. Jeff?
Yeah, so good evening, everybody. Uh, my report starts on page fifty-eight. Couple of things to highlight, so uh we are in our fourth week, our clinic optimization. And um, as you know, that's part of our twenty twenty-four copy for this year. Um, things are going well, so we have three to four churn of resources. Um, here in on location for those four weeks they've been here. Um, they've probably seen about thirty, last I heard it was thirty-eight individuals, uh, the majority of them providers. Um, spending time doing one-on-ones. Um. Um, and on top of that, we have some leadership report outs uh on a weekly basis. We, they are starting to see some changes in the metrics uh around documentation. Um, provider set inspection, um, reducing um after our documentation time and so uh that'll continue on for this week. Um, we'll, we'll probably spend a month of May working on just the backend metrics to that. Um, and incorporating some of our um. Oh, our training. Um, so as we move forward, you know, how do we? Kind of keep this sustainable uh for the future and for new providers coming in, so that's all will be incorporated into that project uh as we move forward, so. Um, the other one is around uh change healthcare and I don't know um if Jason has any details on the. Backend finance, but from uh IT perspective, we are. About ninety percent transitioned over to our new clearinghouse. Um, after the change healthcare incident, we are nine weeks into daily calls. Um, and we're pretty much uh done with that for right now. Um. I know there are other hospitals still struggling out there. Um. Nine weeks in, um, but we seem to be uh daily improving. We are in with some of our pairs and so um that's progressing as well. To the, to the item. Any other questions on that?
I know that email down was down for a couple of days, but it looks like you guys were able to fix that.
Yep, so we spent the last twenty hours uh working out, trying to find the needle in the haystack that was causing the issue. It was more than just email, but um there was a basically a a bad port on one of our core fiber switches. Um, and so that has been resolved. There are redundancies to that, but the. The funny thing about that is unless it like um with some of the redundancies, unless it totally goes down. That automatically switches, switches over, so most end users wouldn't. Even see a blip um in their email and other functionality. But this one was kind of hung between working and not working. And so um it never switched over to a failover. Um, so basically we had to go searching for it, so that spent the last. Twenty hours trying to find it. Um, so.
Good job finding it.
Yeah, so we got a lot of people that will have to catch up and sleep here in the next day or two, so, but but we're done. Good teamwork by by everyone and so.
I'd have just on the cyber with room cycle, just today we started getting. Uh, electronic permits back from from Bear Blue Cross. They were our last major commercial plan to get electronic permits back to impose them electronically to patient accounts. Uh, we are still sending paper claims to a few insurance agencies, including Assuris, which is a subsidiary of Regions and HMA. Subsidiary, so still paper claims run out.
Bob, you have a question?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, so um. Are we going to permanently switch to this new clearinghouse or go back to? Yeah, so we'll, we'll stay on TriZetto. Um. Basically, un- until we find something different, but but for right now, um, no, it's going to be TriZetto. Um, along with probably another hundred hospitals. There are a few. Uh, hospitals, probably about twenty of them that are switching back to change. Um, in, you know, in my book feeling is that there's still unrest with change. And right, and so, yeah, I mean, that's not. To me, we we wouldn't do that, so um es- especially with some of the data that is now leaking out there. Um, so we're keeping a close eye on all of that, so. Good call. Are they, are they roughly about the same price? Yeah, um, so price does, nothing changes on our side of the switch over, so, yep.
It's because their their change healthcare is contracted with Oracle of KBH.
Right. Got it.
TriZetto is also contracted to Oracle.
Third party, the third party.
Yep, yeah, fourth party, a lot of parties. It's now called the fourth party.
Anything else for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, who's Ron Earl after again?
Only until July third.
Uh, go ahead.
Hey, my report's on page sixty-five. Um. I don't have anything new to add to that since I published this. So sorry for the length of it. It's my quarterly report, but it's also the annual report for safety committee. Twenty twenty-two, so that is in there, so.
Bob, I know that uh when we had our. Uh, meeting with Julie the other day, you had, you raised some questions about some of the numbers on page seventy-five. You want to call our attention to. You want to call our attention to any of that stuff, I thought that some of the questions you were asking were, were pretty good and, you know, we could kind of call our attention to especially some of the workplace violence stuff.
That a question for me, Matt?
Well, I was just, I remember when we met with Julie, you called attention to some of the numbers on page seventy-five about workplace, workplace violence. And I thought you asked some good questions about that. And I thought maybe if you wanted just to call, call the whole board's attention to some of that stuff, because I thought it was good to, good to mention that.
Two things that's really stuck out was staff behavior, but then also abusive violent behavior to staff. Have both gone up quite a bit.
Yeah, and one of the things that, that we talked about at the meeting was, we talked about staff behavior, it's, it's sort of a whole range of things, you know, it could just be people being mean to each other, it could be things that are, that are kind of more serious than that. And so one of the things it doesn't do is sort of sagriate those kinds of things. Julie, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, I, so a lot, lot of that discussion happens in the Safety Committee, and we've recently, I don't want to minimize any of the workplace violence incidents that we legit, but there are some that we really want to take a dive into. We've talked about some changes we have intended for the emergency department based on some violence that occurred back there. And then there is a whole host of concerns about staff's behavior to other members of the staff. So recently, we segregated those and HR will be reporting on those independently, because obviously those are resulting counseling, people sitting down together and working out what are the issue is, but where our staff is actually impacted by patients or visitors and violence or aggressive behaviors involved, we want to be able to, to take the time to, to really address those. So we're a little more segregated reporting at the Safety Committee itself.
So they're gonna, they're looking at the specifics of the cases and not just treating them all the same, because they require, I mean, they're very different, there's a wide range and they require a different response.
But you, you look at, and how I interpret this is more patient to staff, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three, it's almost doubled.
Yep.
I mean.
Look at the locations, you look at places like the emergency department where we've seen a big increase in volume, registrations.
And I also do think staff are reported.
Yeah.
I think back in the day, it was, this was part of our job, we really empowered and support the staff.
No, that's a great point, yeah.
Yeah.
We are very clear that we don't tolerate aggressive behavior, and I think they, they appreciate that support, and that is a good point.
Yeah, that is, I suppose that's one thing, if it was, if they just said, well, that's part of the job, and they just kind of brushed it off.
For you. So that's why there's a rate on the dashboard of workplace violence events for a hundred FTEs too, it's also to account how big your organization is or what's going on there.
That's true, we do need to keep that in mind that we do have more employees now.
We started doing that paid training, and that is part of that training too, is that training obviously encourages them, we think rather than just accept work, so.
All right. Any other questions about Ron's quarterly report? Good. Thank you, Ron. Sorry to put you on the spot there, Bob. All right. Next up, we have medical staff, and we start with our Chief of Staff, Dr. Hoppy. Dr. Hoppy?
Yeah, good evening, everyone, my report is on page one oh two. The Medical Executive Committee reviewed a total, I guess, of just six credentialing files, they're all reappointments this time around. I have nothing further to add and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so has everyone had a chance to review these? I know with the, with the system being down for a little bit, there's a little bit of a hiccup there, but for the couple of us back, but.
I was not, so I will not be going tonight.
Okay, so Erica, because of the system problems, was not able to get these, so that's the only reason she'll be abstaining.
They remain in my portal, so I can still review them after the fact, just to keep myself up to speed.
Sure.
You know?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll try it out.
All right. Any questions about this before we entertain a motion? Okay, so we have motion to approve these providers for reappointment.
I'll move to approve them.
Okay, Terry moves.
I interrupted you.
Sorry, Bob, you want a second? All right, Bob, seconds. All those in favor then of approving this slate of reappointments, please say aye. Okay, that's four, and then any no votes, abstention? Erica's going to abstain, so, and we have the, the reason for that, it's not because of any concerns, it's just because of that's having been tested. Anything else, Dr. Hoppy?
No, I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to our CMO.
Our report begins on page one oh three. One addition, as DeeDee pointed out earlier, we're looking at early July to start inpatient dialysis rather than into the second quarter. I did want to call out the fairly immense amount of work that's gone on in recruiting. And the amount of work that goes into getting providers to where we decide whether or not to bring them for an interview. We've had, as of this writing, I think it was seven providers so far this year start, they're a year, so that's our total. So despite the fact that we live in a world for this, we know that we're short tens of thousands of physicians nationally. We're doing our part to bring them here. I mentioned in my report, Dr. Schreier's visit, one of the statistics I ran across preparing for that was that the Labor Board projects that we will have ninety-four percent physician at workforce adequacy in metro areas by twenty thirty-six and fifty-four percent network for physician adequacy in non-metro areas. So well, the projection is that just over half the, or just under half of the slots that we need in non-metro areas will actually have providers for. So we're swimming upstream.
Or we need to become a metro area.
That would, just.
That's a good.
The other thing that I want to call out is that, and Rhonda, thank you for the call out in your report. This is the last time that I'll be addressing the board with the title Medical Director, Community-Based Care Services, I transitioned out of that role officially Tuesday. Which brings me to the last addition to my report, which is you have an action item to approve the medical director roles, you lasted that in June of twenty-two. There have been some transitions since then, and we need to update those in the works.
Yeah, so this is something that is a board obligation, part of our powers, part of our, you know, what we have to do. And we haven't done it, so we need to kind of update these, so this is a request for motion, well, request, Dr. Martin, for motion to approve the current medical directors, so the medical directors are the emergency department, Dr. Schmelzer in the lab, Dr. Wyman in community-based medicine, Dr. Stone, medical director of clinic operations, Dr. Hibbs, and the chief medical officer, obviously, is Dr. Martin.
And I would just make one small correction, which is Dr. Stone's job description title's actually Medical Director, Community-Based Care Services.
Okay.
Is there any issue if we vote today, it doesn't sound like Dr. Stone, he can service until May first.
She has a contract.
She has a contract.
So.
It's probably more appropriate for the board to make that recognition prior to her sentence, so that she's blessed when she starts.
He's, yeah, so she's acting better. So did everybody get that? Does anybody need me to repeat that or anything, or any questions for Dr. Martin about any of those positions? Okay. Motion to approve these medical directors, as, as just mentioned with Dr. Stone, that being the community-based care service.
As you listed.
Okay, motion from Erica, second from John, hey, for the discussion. All those in favor of approving these medical directors, please aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Anything else for Dr. Martin?
Just, just in general, are you feeling this year, it's a little bit better able to secure providers, and I know we got more, but you feel a change of the environment?
I'm actually surprised. We have, we've had one position, there's mention of dietary, that we posted a position and wound up with seventeen applicants. That's unprecedented. You know, when you hear numbers like there's roughly a million physicians in the country and roughly a third of practicing physicians are over fifty-five and a fifth are over sixty-five. And we graduate about thirty-one thousand doctors a year. So you, you start with the idea that we're going to have a gap lose three hundred thousand over the next ten, fifteen years. And hopefully we're replacing them, but we aren't making any headway with those numbers. I'm, I'm pleased with our success, I think it says more about Ellensburg and this organization than it says about the workforce.
But it ties back in with, with what Erica pointed out earlier about the new patients, how we just, I mean, it seems like there's as much demand as we can sort of handle.
Yeah, I had a piece in the Daily Record for Doctors Day, and in it, I said, you know, the workforce we have now is probably, well, the way that we worked twenty years ago, we probably have enough providers in the county, but the way that we work now, we're probably about halfway there.
Yeah, like you said, swimming upstream. Any other questions for Dr. Martin? Well, we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
All right, next up then, we have our CFO, Jason Adler. Jason?
Thank you, I have just two things to comment on outside of my packet, and then I'll jump over to that. So Dr. Martin and I, at three thirty seven noon, we got to meet with Congresswoman Kim Schreier's DC staffer on healthcare. She in Washington, so this was her second time to Washington. It may be one of the first times to rural community, and we got to spend some.
I admitted that this was her first trip this side of the Cascades.
Yep. So we have a lot of focus on the Optum update and what they're working on in DC through that. And then we walk into, been walking through, yeah, expansion project for the window. And a lot of discussion on Medicare Advantage and provider shortages that are anticipated. One number that really stood out in that is we employ about one point three patient financial service people to agree our end, that we, so we have more staff trying to meet their rules and obligations of the insurance company than we do people touching the patient, so. And that, that includes all Red Cycle, all of coding, all registration type of positions. Yeah, it's very positive meeting, it's nice to be well engaged with them, Congresswoman Scharr gave Kedeta a call out at her last energy and commerce meeting.
And we've also, we're actively engaged with both her and Senator Cantwell on a congressional, he does a directed expense to help support rural OB and Washington State, and that would be for simulation training, not just for OB hospitals in rural communities, but also for the emergency department, for all those who are going to have these women show up regardless. So we're really hopeful that we'll be able to get that, that directed funding.
Yep, that's one of the things we talked about.
The, the other thing that's worth calling out is that Dr. Schreier's office has been very helpful in helping us try to fight to get the funds that were taken from us for COVID testing that we did early in the pandemics that was subsequently deemed to be unnecessary by people who have no idea what necessary means.
These are the, those were the bio plans?
Yes.
So we're hopeful that they'll be able to, that they'll be successful in?
Their office has been able to, they think they're going to be able to facilitate a conversation with, with the two of us at Naridian. But Naridian's claim was that they responded to our original appeal and that we failed to risk them. My observation was that in this rural environment, we could take that information, sprinkle it on, sprinkle it on any feedlot, and it would just blend in.
We appealed and they did not respond to our appeal, so they're saying we're outside, yeah.
We contacted multiple, multiple times.
And they're saying we missed the appeal window, but it's six hundred thousand?
Yeah. The other thing, just before his meeting, got an email from WISHA, and they're reporting total hospital twenty twenty-three Washington hospitals are lost at one point seven four billion dollars. It is down from twenty twenty-two from two point one billion dollar losses of Washington hospitals. But that's from net operations, not that it creates another scenario. Back to my CFO report, so I just wanted to run through the summary items, our length this day for March was three point seven days, so we're just tracking that to stay below that four point oh days that we were able to exceed during the COVID pandemic. Twenty-four year on average, people are that four point oh days, we did have fourteen swing band patient days, so it's great to see that. For our community. Volumes in the fourth quarter, or first quarter twenty-four generally lower than twenty twenty-three. And below our budget, and below prior year. Ambulatory clinic visits, we were down twelve percent in March compared to budget. Most significantly, for me, Cleo and Peds and Women's Health, we do have, in the first quarter, five providers around FMOLA. And then the normal PTO vacations and leaves, but the, that's in the lays is a new thing that we haven't experienced in prior years. Ambulatory clinic visits, touched on that, overall expenses were over budget this month primarily in salaries, benefits, and purchase services. The benefits expenses over just due to timing, we have three payrolls in the month of March, and we did do, and are cool to try to level that out as we have done before. And then purchase services, the expense over budget there is Cerner, and that is related to project work from Cerner. We have been doing the clinic optimization projects and then clinic breakout projects, so we're going to split out like our cardiology, neurology, wound care clinics are rolled up to larger departments right now, and we're going to uncouple those, so we have, we can better check with financials and numbers at that department level. KVH claims processing or month-end financials, we ended three hundred and seventy thousand operating loss and a seventy-four thousand debt loss. I anticipated that loss to be worse than it's been for March, given revenue of welcome of budget, so I'm thankful where we did come in and thankful for investment returns right now. KVH claims processing still severely impacted by Optum. We are, as Jeff reported, doing all the workarounds possible to alleviate that, but Red Cycle staff definitely still feeling tensioned, still sending claims out paper, which is just hard to believe this day and age. With that, AR grew in March to a very high eighty-five point eight days. We have capped in April and we seem to be now coming down on the AR. And with that AR increase, cash decreased to a hundred and fifty-five days cash. And we did anticipate cash to decrease to the expansion project spending, we didn't anticipate it to decrease this fast because of the cyber incident that delayed some collections.
So you anticipate these cash going up or?
Or steady, so we have some large Walker construction stuff coming, so we just paid two million for Walker and we just got the CT and MRI as well, and those are just, are coming out the next week. So some really large projects happening there. And on that, just kind of cash basis, so. And on that, just kind of cash basis. So we started after we figured out the fifteen million in debt last year and then the high play cash is about seventy-three million dollars that we have overall I believe, including that debt that we took for the project, we are sitting today at fifty-six million. So seventy-three millions where we started, subtract out twenty million today is what we spent on the project. That would put us about fifty-three million cash. We, we have, we're safe over that. So we're still cash positive. Any questions on that?
Can I just mention, and I think six months ago or so, when the twenty twenty-two statewide losses for hospitals came out, we talked about those a little bit, and obviously those have been updated. Um, I'm also hearing from my peers that it continues to be very painful out there, mostly around deductions from revenue. People are, are really struggling with volumes down a little bit, but these Medicare Advantage plans that are no pay, slow pay. Um, and you know, you predicted it, John, everyone seeing an increase in uh, financial assistance across the state, the depletion of the three forty B people, there's a lot of hand during.
If you turn to page one ten, I wanted to talk about some of the stats and also contribute to our financial position. So we are getting creamed from the insurance companies and that's still a, that'll pay type denial efforts are working. But also our revenue in quarter one of twenty twenty-four is lower than our revenue from quarter one twenty twenty-three pretty significantly, especially if you adjust for inflation. The biggest driver of that is orthopedics is the number one driver of that. So we are, we're down about sixty procedures in ortho from Q one to now. Uh, contributors of that is last year we had overlapping orthopedic practices. We had marriage winding down into retirement. We had Ada Chung. And we had been out Dr. Longo. So while Longo has picked up significant portion of that, we, we take. The other piece during that transition, Jim Rupter and Dean Ambar also left. So, so Longo and Derek Henderson are the only providers currently in our ortho practice. So it's been being rebuilt. And on Dr. Martin's report, we do have two, one is P to P A starting with contracts or with an agreement signed, we're very excited for, and Dr. Longo is very excited for these candidates. These are his number one gold choice candidates. We're very excited to be put that program again. They'll get him more time in the OR then because he'll have clinic help.
Right now he's only doing two days a week in the OR. So once we get the other PAs and we can bump it back up for free.
And there's a community demand for the services.
Yeah, and we've been like on marketing for that or community education for that. They are at capacity. So Michelle is up on that as well.
We're just starting to get some of the twenty twenty three, uh, uh, inpatient data, and it's interesting to note that in twenty twenty-three, we did, through the third quarter, we did not have a single inpatient total. So Dr. Longo does his knees and his hips as observation patients, very short stay patients. He also, Dr. Marriage, um, and Dr. Chung averaged what about a hundred and twenty-five minutes per case?
Yeah, I think it's a hundred and five minutes per case.
And Dr. Longo is much more different in the OR, so he can get more cases into a day. Amy, I think is shooting for five when they're, so very in the OR, we get that fourth OR going and we can bounce.
That, that equipment that he's interested in that we talked about, would, would that play into efficiency or just quality?
Quality.
I don't remember. Just a, yeah, just another tool for it, one as they speed up the procedures, yeah.
Not just, not difference in cases, just a, a much different way to approach doing the same task. Yeah.
In, in general, uh, innovations like that, they don't add much to efficiency, but they do add outcomes.
Last thing I have is the surplus resolution. Yep. Is there, are there any questions, uh, on the board about, uh, statistics and indicators about anything else that Jason talked about before we move on to the resolution?
So quarterly is my goal to bring a surplus resolution. We may have to bring them monthly for a period too, and that's due to the expansion project coming. We're having a ton of equipment to be surplus. Um, and I don't want to wait too long between bringing those. So this list is long. It's not only expansion project stuff, but it's things that are coming out of as managers are looking at their, um, items on their capital list.
Okay. Is there anything you think we need to know about this or is it fairly self-explanatory? Anybody have any questions about this resolution?
I was just wondering, there's so many televisions on here. Are we taking televisions out of all the patient rooms?
No, I think that these are already been, they're what? I think that these televisions have already been out and removed, and this is a cleanup item.
So there's no televisions in any of the patient's rooms?
No, there are told. There are new ones.
Oh, they're new ones.
These are old. Some of these are acquired like ninety, yeah, but early two thousands. These are old, like some of these are stories.
Oh, okay. No, that, that's what I was thinking this was, because, uh, if somebody look at this, uh, uh, from a public, they should know that these are just old televisions we're getting rid of and that the, the patient rooms will still have televisions.
Yeah. Yeah. Anytime we replace the capital item, we can do capital item. Yeah.
Any other questions? We have motion then to approve resolution twenty-four dash oh three, the surplus property. Motion, Erica?
Second?
Second from John. Any further discussion? All those in favor then of resolution twenty-four dash oh three, the surplus personal property, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Anything else, Jason? Thank you.
Do we anticipate another capital items in the next few months that's? Yeah, notice there's none this time. And at the break soon.
I don't think in the next two months, I don't. It's just longer. It don't come to the board.
So if you guys remember, we moved up old business so we can report out on the board self-evaluation. Erica took the lead on this, on this process. Erica?
Yeah, so board members met recently to conduct the self-evaluation process and, and we used a little bit of a different method this time. We're always in search of something that is the most meaningful, that gets us the the best amount of feedback to ourselves and the, the most actionable information, so the most useful. And with Amanda's help, I'm thinking Amanda, um, we had a, a list of questions that we went over to the ones that are most relevant that we wanted to discuss. And then additionally, Amanda worked with SLP to get SLP feedback that we could discuss. And, um, I think I speak for the board, we're very appreciative for the thoughtful um, replies that were aggregated for us to discuss. We, um, had some immediately action information, um, that suggestions and that, and one of those was the, uh, the break in the board meeting. So we don't necessarily need to sit through stuff that doesn't apply as a whole time long days. Um, so we appreciate those suggestions. We appreciate the feedback on how the board can approve, improve and things that you want us to continue doing, things that you believe make us strong. Um, I thought it was a very fruitful process. I thank the board members for participating in that with me. And, um, it was a pleasure to lead. So thank you, everybody.
Yep. Thank you very much, uh, Erica. Thank you for taking the lead on this process.
And again, another thanks to Amanda for helping to scaffold that. Much appreciated.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
So we will take, uh, let's take a quick five-minute break here, um, until six twenty-five. We are still in public session. But this gives, uh, wow, you have something to say?
Yeah, just one, one quick comment. Maybe it's already been made, but appreciation to the foundation for putting on such a nice event. It was fun. Appreciate sitting, uh, being at the table with Erica and Dr. Martin and a few other people and Dr. Solberg and you know, those events are really, really good. Um, glad we're, you know, back to doing the normal stuff. You think of what COVID did to us and now we're, you know, actually shaking hands again for better, for worse. So, um, appreciate that. And then the, the, the whole, the group behind helping out with change. Oh my goodness, this is, I mean, the backside of trying to, um, get, you know, bills process is it's horrific and heavy and that's our lifeblood. And so acknowledging all those folks that are doing a lot of work trying to just process, um, billing. So I just want to say those two things. Appreciate it.
Yeah, well said, Bob. Thank you. Uh, all right. So we'll take a four-minute break until, uh, six, uh, twenty-five. We stuck, they'll still are in public session, but this will give everyone a chance who doesn't need to stick around for the rest of the meeting to, uh, leave. And, uh, I know you've been a long day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Yes.
Thank you.
That was really interesting.
Oh, wow. All right, we have ten minutes.
Okay.
Yes.
So you guys. We can, right? I mean, I guess technically you guys could leave now if you want. I mean, I, you mean.
I don't think we have, I would say, yeah, only one's like double brush request. So Mandy and I, yeah, Mandy and I. Um, tomorrow. I, I don't want that to be hanging out there.
Yeah.
I'd like to make sure we're close.
And, no, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. We will, um, follow up.
Okay.
And see if we can get contact.
That's fine. I mean, I think that all this stuff about provider shortages and demand has sort of been pressed. Anyway. So I think this should be fairly clear for less than this, but it can be in a minute.
So who's left in charge of turning out the craft pot? Since Jason is.
We got it. You have, you have reduced three of us.
The last one craft.
Oh, really? Oh, so that's why?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pass off my sticky chair.
Oh, how nice.
Are you not sticking around then?
Well, he doesn't need to stick around for the.
Or is that all we have?
Yeah.
We don't have any big fix.
Yeah, it's just us.
We can make something up and then you stay and have cookies.
Or you can have a cookie.
You can have a cookie anytime.
Thanks a lot.
Dr. Brian.
Thanks a lot for the financial report. Here's a cookie.
Yeah. At least I got a cookie after that.
All right, um, once John comes back, we'll just, uh, go back into public session.
Are we done recording?
We're still recording. We'll just stop it when we go into.
Okay, that's right. So we're still, no, we're, yeah, this is the thing. It's me. Discombobulated. It's good, but I have to re.
I really enjoyed it. Yeah. Thanks for telling me.
What do you think over there? We can't stop the recording. So we'll have to. It's all or nothing.
My, my analysis was what I was.
Just.
Long accounting to do.
Bob, are you up there?
I know, and it starts with, they're doing that, but, but it's somebody who saw that, and somebody for getting on television, just they'd be worried if they were in any of their.
Then we're going to talk about.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
It's still live.
Hopefully catch my family.
I think you bet. Thanks, Jason. I can see you.
Let's see to the other side of this. Yeah, I got your text and just, um, didn't necessarily want to engage about it over text. So, um.
I mean, uh, the, the, the thing that they talked about, the question I thought I had.
So I'm not going to engage in that right now.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it.
We get Bob back? No, he hasn't. He hasn't popped back into view.
This, this is a public meeting, I'm sure.
Uh, John should be here in a minute. Let's get started when he comes.
I hope he didn't run away at high.
Uh, he'll be here.
Where's Bob? Bob, there's some really nice cookies over here. Just thought you should know.
Really?
For the exact question, Bob, do you mind if you just call into Erica? We were just chatting. We have to end this Zoom.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Okay, put you on speaker here.
But I do have to show you something.
What's that?
So, yeah, I'll call into Erica right now.
Oh, after this is over, we're still in this one for a little bit.
Oh, we'd end up in a feedback. Temperature drops now that all the bodies grow. They know I was thinking that.
Okay. Let's, uh, super John. So we're still in, in public session. We have, uh, just a couple of little things. Uh, one is education and board reports. There's a leadership summer summit coming up in July in San Diego. There's some information you're packing up about that. Does anybody know at this point whether they are interested in going?
I, I am, because I've never been to that, uh, meeting ever before.
Okay. And John, you're still not, okay, all right. So it seems like the only person, uh, on the board, uh, who's interested in going is Terry.
I believe we will have two staff members.
Two staff members. Okay. So, um.
One thing, yeah, I don't know if you want to hear a, a perspective, being on the finance committee and going through its numbers. As long as we're in a deficit, I'd be really careful about travel that's not absolutely urgent. It just feels like talking about putting a spotlight on us making choices. So that's just my two cents.
Okay.
I, I appreciate that. I do want to thank the foundation. They are.
And I'm not speaking of your employees.
They're providing a scholarship for one of those employees.
Oh, that's generous.
Since, since it's a, a kind of our way, uh, I, I think, uh, we're not going to register for it yet. So I, I was thinking I might just kind of see how our, our deficit is happening.
Okay. So you'd like to wait, uh, until we make any kind of, entertain any kind of motion, uh, to approve anyone going, Terry?
Yeah.
Get the feel.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're going to have, uh, at least one more meeting or maybe another one before we, we approve this. Was it, is that right, Manny? What's, do you know what the early, early bird, bird deadline is? If I remember correctly, it's not for a, I mean, it's not for a couple of months, a month or two.
Good. Uh, has there been a number as far as how much money the foundation raised that?
I, I have not heard of that yet.
Yeah. Okay, um, so we'll hold off on that, uh, the new business, the expansion, uh, the special work meeting that's going to be on May twenty-eighth four thirty-five-ish.
That's a Tuesday, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's going to be officially eighth. Please put that on your calendar. Anything else before we go into executive session? So, uh, Julie doesn't have anything for executive session. This is just going to be a chance for us to kind of, uh, come back and, and, uh, uh, close the loop on a couple of things on our board self evaluation. Uh, ten minutes sound, sound good to everybody?
And this is under personnel?
Personnel. Uh, Erica, that's on good ten minutes. Uh, I'm not sure if she needs to stay for just a self evaluation. Uh, okay, so we will go into executive session. Well, let's take a few minutes, uh, uh, break for ourselves just till six thirty five. Take ten minutes, six forty five, we'll reconvene into executive session. So we'll be in exec from six thirty five to six forty.
Bob, log out, log back in.
He's going to join us.
Bob, do you want to be on FaceTime? I can put your face on here.
And thank, thank you, Amanda and Tricia. I really appreciate it.
Oh, it's fine.
Thank you.
Any action anticipated?
And you can eat your cookie however you want. No.
No action is expected. Thank you, Manny, for that reminder. Um, yeah, so no action is anticipated following the executive session. Uh, we will reconvene into public session at, uh, six forty five. Thank you. Meet, uh, public meeting, uh.
Whenever we, yes. Public, public.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're going.